Everybody ready up there? All right. Yeah, I got the gall to debate. This is the organizational meeting of the City of New Franklin. The first meeting of the year starts with the mayor calling to order the organizational meeting and then we'll proceed with election of the council president and then I will be happy to deliver the gall back to that council president, whoever he or she is. But as we begin, why don't we stand and begin with the question? And we're seated, but why don't we just take a moment before I begin and before we begin and just thank the good Lord for the blessings of this day, the blessings that you've given this city, the blessing of the commitment of service of these council people and the blessing of the service of all the people who work here in New Franklin, all the safety forces, all the service forces, all the administrative forces. Ask the good Lord to continue to keep them all safe, keep us all safe, help us to keep one direction and that direction is always and every day whatever is best for the citizens of the City of New Franklin. We thank you for the blessings and the opportunity to do that. Amen. Okay, let's see. I think we should proceed to swearing in before we do a roll call because we want to make sure that we have the members in place before we do the roll call. So at this time, we will proceed with the swearing in of Jack Daniels and Kevin Powell, Judy Jones, who is returning for the beginning of her 17th year here on council along with Dave Stock, along as running members. It was already sworn in and so Judge Todd McKenna has been kind enough to join us to do the swearing in of the two new council members. Well, it's always a privilege to do a swearing in to acknowledge a democracy that works through our capable representatives. Congratulations to both of you. I will swear in most of my jurisdictions in Barbour County District, but it's always good to be in. Can you please raise your right hand and I'll begin with you. Both of you at the same time say hi and then state your name.
Hi, Kevin Powell.
Hi, Jack Daniel.
You solemnly and sincerely.
Sincerely and sincerely.
Promise and swear.
Promise and swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will conform to.
That I will conform to.
And uphold.
And uphold.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of both the United States of America.
Of both the United States of America.
And the State of Ohio.
And the State of Ohio.
And will support.
And will support.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And all ordinances and resolutions.
And all ordinances and resolutions.
Of the City of New Franklin, Ohio.
Of the City of New Franklin, Ohio.
I will be loyal.
I will be loyal.
And with strict adherence.
And with strict adherence.
Obey the duties.
Obey the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
Set forth by law.
Set forth by law.
And the will of the citizens.
And the will of the citizens.
Of the City of New Franklin, Ohio.
Of the City of New Franklin, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And congratulations, men, and welcome. And Judy, thank you again for your willingness to continue to serve. We also want to welcome Bethany McKenna, our council representative, who represents us so ably and we're happy to have you here as well. All right, I think at this time then we can do a roll call of the council members.
Mr. Cox.
President.
Mr. Hargit.
President.
Mrs. Jones.
President.
Mr. Fetterman.
Here.
Mr. Daniels.
Here.
Mr. Powell.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Okay, we will proceed then with the election of the council president. According to Roberts rules, we will open the floor momentarily for nominations. Seconds are not necessary in this process. The process, once a nomination is made, we will then call to see if there are any other nominations and according to Roberts, we have to ask that three times. And when those nominations, at that point, if there's no further nominations, votes are nominations and then we proceed with a roll call vote. Well, each member announces their choice from among those who are nominated. So you'll state a name as to who your vote in the event that there's more than one candidate nominated. So with this, I will open the floor for nominations for president of council.
I would like to nominate Ms. Jones.
All right. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed and at this point, I would ask the clerk to do a roll call vote for each member to announce their choice for council president.
Mr. Cox.
Ms. Jones.
Mr. Hargit.
Mrs. Jones.
Mrs. Jones.
Mr. Fetterman.
Mrs. Jones.
Mr. Powell.
Mrs. Jones.
Mr. Daniels.
Mrs. Jones.
Mr. Stock.
Mrs. Jones.
All right, with that, we have a man of president. This is history.
Please call me Judy.
This is the first, I believe, this will be the first woman who served as president of the New Franklin City Council lot.
Wow, I can't remember like that.
Yeah, so that's a beautiful thing.
Yeah. I can't think of a better council president. I honestly, I think that's wonderful.
And I joyfully will surrender.
Oh, I love this.
Bring the gall back to you.
May I take this home?
Uh, yeah.
Never really have to use it, Judy. I don't think I've ever used it in 12 years.
So Judy, I think that process for election of vice president, which you'll proceed with is the same as the president.
James, I will open the floor for nominations for a vice president.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Cox.
I'd like to ask for nominations for vice president. And I'll ask for nominations for vice president. And Kelly, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Cox?
Sure, yes.
Mr. Cox. Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Mr. Cox.
Mr. Fetterman?
Mr. Cox.
Mr. Powell?
Mr. Cox.
Mr. Daniels?
Mr. Cox.
Mr. Stock?
Mr. Cox.
Thank you.
And I know that now normally we do the council assignments, but I want to hold off on that until I speak with everybody and see where they want to be. And I'm not sure by our rules if I'm supposed to do that by Friday, but I'll assign them to you, Kelly, by Friday.
Well, I have not assigned any.
Resolution.
Right, I've not assigned any council member to our three pieces of legislation.
And I will read those tonight, but the reason I say that, I'll do it by Friday so you'll have them. Well, in time for the next meeting.
Okay.
Is that okay if you call too?
Certainly, I have no objection. I don't think, I don't know that there's anything contrary to that in the Charter. If there is, I'll take a look and let you know.
Okay, thank you. And now we're going to do the adoption of the meeting dates for 2022. Does anyone have a problem with keeping them the way they are? Do I need a motion for that?
To the roll call, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Cox?
For keeping it on the Thursday, Wednesday at six o'clock, yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And so I would ask for an adjournment now at 6:10.
Okay.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
And I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, January 5 meeting, City of New Franklin.
Committee first.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Call to order the committee meetings for Wednesday, January 5.
You can just start. You can just start.
Just start the meeting?
Yeah, the committee meeting too.
Okay, the first meeting, resolution number 22R01, Finance Committee, a resolution approving the appointment of Daniel Bickett as chief of the City of New Franklin Police Department and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And I think Dan is here to speak. Am I correct, Dan?
I can answer any questions, but I'm sure. Our current chief, Dan Davidson, who has served so honorably, has advised us that he will be resigning at the end of January and therefore we posted that position internally, the position of chief, and it says a lot, we had one, and that was Captain Bickett. And that's not to suggest there might not have been some others who might have been qualified, but among many other things, it's an indication in respect of that Captain Bickett has held in. I have recommended his appointment as chief and his resume is attached and it speaks for itself. He came to us, he's been with us three years now. He was 17 years, I think, with Akron, exemplary service, born and raised here. I happen to, because of, well, for a variety of reasons, know an awful lot of Akron officers who served with Dan and spoke so highly of him at the time we brought him over here. And some of the best, and I mean the best, street policemen from Akron told me how sorry they were losing when he came over. I am, I am asking you to, I have fashioned this an emergency resolution and I have included that in the note that it's immediately necessary for preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens since the position of captain will need to be advertised and filled expeditiously. To go, and let me briefly, as best as possible, we usually try to fill from within if we have qualified candidates for a variety of reasons. And you know them all. It helps. People expect to have an opportunity to move up. It helps you to keep good people. It's good for morale and as a general rule, it makes good sense. We have numerous qualified, several qualified candidates for the position of captain. To keep the ball rolling here, it's going to take some time. Our police force is, you know, hey, you can always use more. We have a sufficient number, but if we go below those numbers, it becomes difficult filling shifts. And when the chief leaves, that's one less person on the force. We have another officer who's going to be going out just coincidentally on extended medical leave. So come February 1st, we're going to be two officers short. If this appointment were to go three readings, we'll be into February before we can even fill this position. Once this position is filled, if you approve this tonight, I'm asking you to do that, we can then advertise and post the captain's position. We have some very good candidates on our police force that we expect to apply. And that's a 10-day process that the posting has to be up for 10 working days. And so as the clock moves on this, if you pass this tonight and we post the captain position tomorrow, they'll have till January 20th to apply. And then we very well may be into interviews. And even if we do that expeditiously, if we, within a week, we fill that position, now we're at January 28th. We expect that position to be filled from within and probably from our sergeants, our detectives. So then we're in a position where we're going to post that position. If we do that by January 28th, it's going to stay posted till February 11th. You getting all this?
Absolutely.
And then, and then if we go through interviews and fill that position, the, now we need to fill that from within, another full-time officer. We don't post that one until March the 4th. And we don't get that officer in until the middle of March. And even when we do, we're still one officer short because we've got somebody out on sick leave. So I believe those are certainly sufficient reasons to treat this as an emergency resolution and I think it merits waiving the three readings and all of the enforcement of that fact that as it happens, we've got a most qualified candidate. So I didn't put Captain Bickett on the spot to make any statements. I asked him to be here in the event that you might have any questions.
And Paul, the salary for that is?
Yeah, the salary for the position is $87,981.96. And we have, council in the past has set up the approved, the salaries for the department heads to all be the same. So that salary for the, that'll be the, that's the salary right now that Chief Davidson is earning effective January 1st. So that's the current salary. That's the same for our fire chief and also for our deputy service director. So that's, that'll be the salary that the captain would be entitled to if he becomes chief.
Does anyone have any question?
Quick question. I would see this as something that would qualify for emergency clause. Do you want to amend this and add the emergency language to it?
It's already in there.
I didn't see what it said. Right, I think the emergency language doesn't actually state that this would be an emergency.
Section 3. Not only that, but section 3, council declares this to be an emergency.
Okay, that's just not at the end. You typically see that later.
And then the reason was stated in there as well.
I see a reason why we shouldn't wait the three readings. Does anybody else have a question?
Because of reason to delay it? I agree with you if I may make a statement. I've worked with Captain Bickett since he's been here. We've worked on different things together. I have complete confidence in him and his ability to lead our department. I know we, he's made some improvements to the department, or modernized things, worked with the officers on all levels, as the mayor said, gained respect of everybody in that department, I believe. I think he's going to be good for our city and for our citizens extremely excited that you're looking at the position. Thank you.
They were extremely lucky to have.
Yes.
I think so too. And anyone that wants to read this resume, I'm going to leave it up here. It's really impressive.
Thank you.
Very much so. I'm sorry that you are going to take time to read all of it. It's really impressive.
Thank you.
It is, honestly. Okay, I'll move on to the next presentation. Resolution number 22R02, a resolution authorizing City of New Franklin to enter school under agreement with the Senate County Public Defender's Commission and declaring this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This is an annual resolution. We utilize the services of the Summit County Public Defender are utilized in the Barbour Municipal Court.
Have we ever had any of those?
No, it's just the ones for the, yeah, no.
Right, and it's interesting, they asked all the 31 different communities in Summit County to sign off on this. It requires, it would require New Franklin to be responsible for legal fees for indigent persons charged with offenses under municipal code of the city. And we have not adopted the criminal code, so as a result, we're not, we're not subject to this. We're subject to the overarching agreement to do it, but if, now, we may adopt a code before the year is over, but that's one of the things we've talked about. So at any event, this is an annual, I don't want to go too long, too far on this, except to say, I don't expect every time to say to you, hey, this is, I think this is an emergency resolution and I'm asking to waive the three readings. This happens to be one of those as well in the sense that the agreement goes into effect January 1st. Now, in the past, we've passed this in December, but we didn't get this from the county until December 14th this year. And that was the day before our last meeting and it was too, we didn't have time to put it on that agenda. So this is the first opportunity we've had to put it on. It's a housekeeping measure. I did include in the language of section 3 that this, the council would declare this to be an emergency immediately necessary for preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens since the contract term begins January 1st, 2022. So to state that's the reason why I would ask you to consider waiving the three readings and approving this tonight. And if I may, just a point of order to clarify the issue of three readings and historically what, what's happened here, at least in the 20 years that I've been around, the, you know, some cities, each city does things differently. And historically here, two things I would say. Anytime a resolution has come up at that, any single council person said they wanted more timeline, more time is always on tape. The second thing I would say is that we've had, you know, we have our share of complaints. Nobody gets a thousand, but, but I don't have any recollection of specific situations where people have come to us and said, hey, gosh, you passed this on one reading, what happened? I wanted to have a word about that. But we want to avoid that for sure. And we want to make sure everybody has a, has a fair chance to be heard on everything. And obviously, that's council's purview. So, you know, I, we will certainly be more judicious from our standpoint in asking you that. And obviously, it'll always be at your discretion. I would agree, it'll tighten things up. And in some ways, you know, we're not as big as some cities and so it's a little harder for us. You know, we don't have big departments and six people working in them that can move these things down the tracks. So we'll continue to get this legislation in front of you as expeditiously as we can and I'm sure you'll continue to take as much time as you need to make sure the public has a chance to know what we're doing. So I get that little speech out of the way right now, so I'll have to say later. All right, that's all I got on that.
Does anyone have any question?
Paul, this is the same price as it's been for the last couple of years. So there's no pricing for the sort of charges there. $170 per case, not 6750 dollars per case, so.
We've never, we've never seen a person. Does anyone have a problem with waiting the three readings?
No. Low, no financial impact. Obviously not controversial, doesn't meet any of the standards that we need.
Resolution 22R03, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to accept an Ohio Department of National Resources Ohio nature with its grant for construction of tennis pickleball courts at the New Franklin Cissok Field complex and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
Now, this is a resolution that, I'm going to ask you to pass this. No, I'm not. You know, we can, we can go through readings on this. You've had a chance to see it. We've been talking about the tennis courts and the pickleball courts for well over a year. So I think everybody knows about it. And we're thrilled that we received this grant for $53,000 approximately and as we mentioned on the website, there were, there were only two in Summit County. There were only 70, I think 75 of these in the whole state out of 88 counties. And we had them in Summit County and we got one of the two. The, so we're very happy about that. However, we will have an opportunity to, I think for council to determine, make a decision to go forward on this project before you actually have to ask on this grant. If you accepted the grant tonight, there's no harm, no fault. That doesn't mean you're going to do the project. If you accept the grant, all that means is that if we build and as long as the total cost is greater than $77,000 that comes out to, the grant has, cannot equal more than 75% of the total project. So the county, I would, I wish the total project was $70,000. It's going to be more than that. If we have any problem, we can act right here. If for some reason we don't build the courts, then we don't get the money. And we'd advise them, but we chose not to go forward. So it could be passed tonight with no risk. It's not a commitment for the city to say, we're building the courts because we've accepted this grant. Having said that, we are, as you're aware, we're rebidding this and the new bids are going out on Friday. The bid opening is going to be January 26th. So we will be in a position, we can certainly go to a third reading on this, which will take us to the first week of February, because at that time, I expect we'll also have a resolution to approve whatever bid we think is the best bid. And that's really when I think council's going to be in a position, well, not really, but that's when you're going to be in a position to say, are we going to go with this project or are we not going to go with the project? You know, that part, we certainly want to go a couple of readings on that, but you know, whether we go to full three, I'll let you figure that out later. There's time to do three even on that at that point. So having said all that, that's, I have no, no problem with taking additional time.
We're having to get some emails now about how excited some people are in the community to have tennis courts.
So we, we have this property solely for this purpose, so we have to move forward or, so that's not a good question. And I can, I don't really have a, either way, you go, you take time on, find your way. A question though, is it, can we have the courts where we state out? Somewhere, we could post a stake somewhere so we can go and go up the seat.
Yeah.
And that might give us a better scope as to what the project is going to be. Yeah, we just got that done. Yeah, I mean, I was out yesterday walking with Kevin. And the pins are there and there's flags on the pins that show where the parcel, where the parcel is. And then, but it, it's a little tough when you see the terrain to actually lay out exactly where the court is. It's the kind of thing where, you know, we can maybe schedule time to go out there together and discuss that. But I think you can visualize it pretty well once you see where the, where the stakes are. The, so, you know, the, the wooded area that's, that's been at issue respectfully and is about two-thirds of that wooded area is on the parcel that the city now owns. About one-third of it, that's my estimation, that at the southern end of that is on the property that the school still owns. I know that it is the school's intention that they would want it all cleared, including that part, because the intention then is to put parking over there. And that parking will serve two purposes. It'll serve our purpose in terms of access to the courts, ADA access for the courts at the western end, and additional parking for the soccer fields. Hopefully alleviate all the Drake Road problems of the people parking on Drake. So that may give you some, that'll give you some idea and the courts themselves would be very close to where that property line is. When you see the stakes at the south end, that's about, that's about the property line. That's about where the courts would extend from. The bids are going to go out with the pickleball courts as an alternate and depending on when they come back in, it may, this may be a project we need to do against Sabres. So, but we'll see what other numbers come in.
I think this is definitely something that needs the three because of the controversy. We've gotten a couple of, a couple of positive comments. You know, there was a petition that had 80 signatures on it, 60 signatures, there was a lot of signatures that were clearly against it. And then there was the grant application that had a lot of signatures on it and many of them weren't from New Franklin. And if I would have signed that, I would have thought I was signing a petition for the grant, not necessarily for the whole project. Did that, did that petition discuss the entire?
I had nothing to do with that petition.
Oh, you didn't?
No, that was some local pickleball players that got some signatures. We didn't prepare that.
I thought that was out of the, I wasn't on.
We do have one other thing, maybe at, at the end of the meeting, someone wants to take a look, might be curious. And now, you know, we're going to have, we've been talking about this a long time and we're going to have a lot more opportunities to talk about it. But when I say we've been talking about it a long time, and we started in October of 20 and then we formed a committee in, in early 2021, and here we are in early 2022 and we're talking about it, so it's certainly, we're not sneaking up on anybody with this, but it goes back even farther than that. This is a diagram. This is a diagram, master plan for athletic complex for the village of New Franklin. It's dated up here, January eighteenth, two thousand and six. And it's the layout for the, for that Sisler complex. And if you take a look at this, you're gonna see the tennis courts. And you're gonna see them, you're gonna see parking to the south of them, parking to the north, parking to the east, which is essentially exactly what's still being planned. So these, if there had been sufficient money in two thousand and six, those courts would be up there already. And it was determined, I think, at that time that that was the place for them, and the parks committee looked at it, the nets committee looked at it, was determined at that point in time that that was the place for them. I, I'll probably end up saying this again, nobody, you know, we're not, it's a logical spot in the sense that it's an athletic complex. The football fields are there, the baseball fields are there, the soccer fields are there, the parking is there. Even went so far, and we talked about trying to save some of these trees, and then there's been conversation even about a security aspect, of whether it's a good idea to have a little mini forest in the middle of the facility where kids are playing soccer and mom's watching, and the toddlers are wandering around, and there's a woods to go into with poison ivy and and other dangers and, you know, other risks, and which is why you normally won't see a wooded area in the middle of a sports complex that extends as far as this one does. So that's really, that's a lot of the background on why the suggestion is to put it where it is. It's been discussed for a long time, but you'll have, you'll have a couple more weeks to, probably three or four more weeks to talk about this.
What, what was the budget, the, the first round of bids? What was that dollar?
Uh, it was, without the ordinance, it was close to nine hundred thousand dollars. Yeah. And I guess while I'm lobbying, and I do wanna make it clear, because it's amazing confusion reigns sometimes, that the intention is to, the way it'll be presented is to pay for this through the, the parks budget, that, which we're required to take five percent of the income tax and use it for parks, capital improvements. To fund this project, there's not enough in that parks budget at this point in time to do it in entirety. So you have to do a bond, which would be really complicated. You could go out to a lender. But quite frankly, because we're at a point in time where we have, you know, a good reserve, we're able to self-fund this, and that's the way it'll be presented to you. To initially use a couple hundred thousand dollars from parks money, the balance would be of, from general, from the general fund, and then it would be reimbursed from the parks on an annual basis until it's, until it's fully recovered. That's not something that we're doing lately. There's been over two million dollars, you know, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand goes in each year right now. And we've been a city for sixteen years, and that parks money has gone to the Tudor House and the ball fields. And that's great. And the good news is, we're in really good shape right now with the Tudor House, because we've taken that responsibility off of us. And we're in really good shape with the ball fields. And so it's not as if we're gonna mortgage our future and, oh, my gosh, we got all kinds of projects that are waiting. There's really not a lot of projects sitting out there right now for the parks. Lockar Field's in good shape, Sisler Field's in good shape. We just upgraded the drainage over on Sisler. Well, we upgraded a lot of the parking at the other two parks. So the, the, the consensus and decision from parks was that it's time to, you know, now it's time to, to spend some money on some facilities that, not just for the kids, but for the older, you know, for the adults and the seniors, et cetera. It's something that'll last for a long time. So that's, that's really the story behind the, the tennis courts and the pickleball courts.
And I might understand that if we don't use this for the tennis, then it reverts back to the school?
Yes. That's in the, that's in the property goes back, yeah.
So it has to be used for that or nothing?
Exactly.
Nothing from us?
Right.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Does that, that appear? So a quick question on the grant. What is the deadline to reply back to them that we accepted?
We let them know that we probably need three readings, and they're satisfied with that.
Okay. You know, this is kinda tied together with the, with the upcoming bid, where I have to look at that and make some decisions. And I, I think we use VIP for financial software. Could we get income statements for the parks fund for the last three years? I think that'd really show us, you know, especially the new, new guys here, how, what that, that budget looks like year after year on the income statement, you know, it's, you know.
Actually, you will, and, and when we close, as, as the other members can tell you, you get straight sheet for the expenses that go out at least five years and the revenue that was up for all the funds.
Okay.
So you will get that. We haven't closed twenty, twenty-one yet, but you will get that, 'cause that's what we normally send out once we get closed. And it's, it's usually five years.
Correct. All right. Is there a five-year capital plan for the parks?
Yeah.
If we could get that as well. And my, my concern is, if we're going to go, go forward with the pickleball and tennis courts, where are we foregoing with other parts of the community? I mean, we've got this sports complex in the one corner of town, but when you get to other portions of town, we really don't have anything. So it'd be nice just to see if we, you know, go ahead and commit to this extent, how is that gonna impact any future expansion or anything else for the other parts of the community? As Mr. Sackard mentioned, we, we did get the emails from, I think it was five emails that came through. You had four, one of them, but three of them were people that were on the nets committee. A lot of them was from family members that were on the nets committee, and they, they stood very highly of it. One of the things I wanna make sure that we keep focus on is, this is, you know, some, some of the emails spoke to how the schools will need this. I wanna make sure we keep in mind that this is not a school project, this is a city project, and that there, there is some separation there. And it doesn't be perceived that we're doing this for the schools, and this is not a school project. I think one of the things that kinda caught my attention was when they said, I forget which, which email it was, but if they go to another site, and somebody comes in, they can basically run them off. And how would that work with the citizens having pickleball court and, and the tennis courts? Would it be dedicated to just Manchester schools, or, I mean, how, how would that go as far as operate those?
No, well, we, we talked about that in, in open meetings several times already here, and, and indicated initially that, that Coventry certainly will be invited to use the courts. Norton has courts, and Northwest didn't have tennis. So we, but the intention would be to open it up to, to all the school districts and give the school teams priorities on the usage. And I don't think that'll conflict with the type, you know, with, with the usage that the, the public will need as far as the tennis courts go. So, yeah, it's gonna be open. It's, it's not a Manchester school project. They, they love to see it, that's why they donated the land, but these are gonna be New Franklin courts. And the same thing with the pickleball, and they're open to, you know, to everybody, and believe me, you'll, you'll, if, if you dig just a little bit, you'll start finding out how popular pickleball is, and how they fight for court space, and, and they, they, there's other people that can speak more eloquently about this, but I'm, they'll probably get a chance later. So, you know, we're not going to, I, I, well, I guess I'll be determined down the road once they're up. I don't anticipate a situation where somebody's gonna have to show that they're living in New Franklin to use the courts. I don't know if that's what you, if that's.
No, no, I, my, my more, I guess my bigger concern is, is, let's say I go there with my son, who decided we're gonna play pets. And next you know, this school team or somebody walks in, and we're getting chased off the courts.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm sorry. I would anticipate we'll schedule those things. So when, and we told Manchester we'd give them priorities, so I, you know, they'll give us a schedule of when they need them. And we can take time and say, the courts will be closed at such and such a time, for Manchester has practice, Manchester has a contest, Coventry has a contest, whatever, the courts close to the public during those periods of time. So I think we can postpone the courts.
And then a few more things that are real exciting. I just had a bunch of questions, I've been thinking about this since we've been seeing some of this stuff a lot. As far as, I think, around four acres is where we're moving, or all trains, is that accurate?
Yeah.
I am assuming we've talked to Soil, Soil and Water about?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I have, but, yes, there's plans.
So we've gone, we've gone to the EPAs and sort of just over the acre, removing all these surface, on the verge of surface, repairing, all that stuff's gonna be looked at.
Whoever is doing the work is gonna have to do that.
Whoever's doing the, suppose those permission we could get in place before you start the project?
Right, exactly.
They could take months and months. So I'm just asking if that stuff's gonna be looked at.
Yeah, well, I, well, I, we have them passed, and I, I trust Kevin, I've had those general discussions with him. So I know he's well aware of that. He talks about those kind of things, which is, those are the part of the project that we decided not to make alternates, because we want people doing the work that, that are well versed in compliance.
Okay. The reason I have is, there's a lot of things that some sort of law could bring in, that they mandate that you do, that could affect the price of the project, that you, we may have a contract we're signed into, you know, committed to the project, that can come back as extras or something, the tail end should be more than a stance. I'm assuming this is being made out as a, a great shot?
Um, I don't know. I can't, I can find out.
Yeah, we have that, we have best and worst possible bidding, which is, we already got that in place, which is a lot of, you know, things about that.
Does anything, probably one of over twenty thousand dollars, you decide you're gonna make this?
I mean, I, I'll defer to, you know, our engineer, he's bid several of his, which we haven't been able to do yet. And that's never been the issue, so my guess would be you're correcting that.
We had a bid, we didn't forget a great shot.
Yeah.
Fifteen years ago, so we have it on file, on the board, but it's a ready project that's one five thousand, and there's a lot of testing, a lot of stuff in there, so.
That's it.
Does anyone have any more questions?
Uh, I'd like to bring the conversation back to this resolution, specifically the resolution itself. Resolution is for a grant for fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. I am very comfortable with waiving the three on this because of what it says in section two. Basically says, City of Franklin does agree to obligate the funds required to satisfactorily complete the post-park project, as you mentioned, over seventy-five, seventy-seven thousand, and become eligible for reimbursement. So if we don't get this money upfront, it gets reimbursed to us if we get the project. If we don't do the project, there's nothing to reimburse. So like the mayor mentioned, this has nothing to do with whether we move forward or not. So for me, I'm comfortable with waiving the three, moving forward without, and moving on to the other, you know, parts of the project that really gained our attention.
I agree with Jim, because there's things that, you know, this is something he said, that we're not obligated to the money, we can get the money. You leave, just keep on leaving stuff on it, Jim. You get the points, you got stuff that you're, you're holding off to wait for three readings and something really, you know, we're not doing the project, we're not going to do the project, you know, that one gets done, it's on the back burner now. All we're saying is we accept it, if we do the project. We, you know, that's just how it felt all along, all these years, that there's certain things that you're not obligated to do it, but you're also not cluttering up your agenda with stuff that doesn't really need to be on there, 'cause you're not doing anything major with that at that point. So that's my take on it, but everybody, I'll eat away.
Does anyone want to take time? As Paul mentioned, when one person wants to, we should do it.
I think there's a lot of people, you know, I don't, there's, there have been a lot of people here who told us they don't like this idea, and very few, if any, have ever shown up that I've seen, I haven't watched every meeting that are for them. And I don't want anything like this here tonight. You know, it's obviously a controversial issue, and it doesn't seem to be to you, and it is.
Yeah, what, what part, what part do you find to be controversial? And I wonder how you feel about the project, Mr. Davis? Do you support the project?
I would support the project on, based on the funding. I don't, I don't support the concept of, of a five-year commitment to Oliver Parkland. I don't know, I'm new here. This is my first meeting. But I do think it's clear to me that there's some controversy about it.
So far, the controversy has been location, from what I understand. There are people who don't want those trees cut down. I have not, well, anyway, I'm not gonna speak, I'll let the people speak.
Well, the thing I've learned through seventeen years is, you're gonna get a few people here, when you don't get a lot, a lot of people here, and we feel most people are like, yeah, we're okay, but you're never gonna, and I'll say never. That's not the problem, you're gonna, you're not gonna be a bunch of people, yeah, we want the courts that come. It's gonna be the people on just about everything. They're gonna be, you're gonna see less people come to, one upon one, it's zero. Zero people that come to. Does anyone here support pickleball? We got?
Okay.
Yeah, we got. So, you know, I'm saying, but, you know, that are gonna be the people. They're gonna come, you're gonna see them some. Well, now they have three readings to come. That's, that's the opportunity, is to get this out, have the conversation, there's nothing wrong with this, it's gonna take some time. I don't believe we have a really congested agenda over the next three.
Okay, so we agree, we bring to time? Does anybody else have any questions from your committee, or any, anything they'd like to discuss?
You don't have to be, right?
They're equal. Do you have any questions that you didn't get over tonight? Do you have anything else, any concerns that you wanna discuss? Okay. Then I'd like to follow the order, Wednesday, January fifteenth, of the New Franklin, we'll see and congratulate.
We need to do that for second half?
Okay. Oh, sorry. At seven?
Six.
I'm sorry. Six, uh, forty-seven.
(Inaudible) to the pride of the United States of America, and to recover what was stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Can I keep a little call? Mr. Cox?
Hello.
Mr. Hargit?
Hello.
Mrs. Jones?
Hello.
Mr. Betterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Stott?
Here.
And if we hasn't approved for the record of the pickings for December fifteenth, we can?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of December fifteenth, twenty-one.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Betterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
I'm saying.
Mr. Daniels?
I'm saying.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Now, for the public comment, please keep your comments addressed to council in under four minutes and state your name and address. Does anyone have any comments?
My name is Mike Channels, I live in fifty-seven, eighteen Grove Road, and I'm here just to show my support to the council of this project for Sisler Park. And I view this as much more than just pickleball courts or tennis courts. This is, I, I play a lot of pickleball, and I see a lot of parks, different communities, I play a lot of work, play many, five times a, a week. But some of the parks and people that we come in contact on a daily basis are just like you guys, just like us. They're, they're great people, and the game is easily learned, easily played by seniors as well as youth, and it, it needs your support.
Sheeran?
Sharon, six, seven, nine, Hampshire Road. My comments about pickleball, four, two. I can't find something on the city website that was sent that I called of two thousand two, make copies, and I wonder if I might, did it copy to everyone?
Yeah.
Oh, you have a link? It addresses, um, trees and help and, and everything that, um, and I know you're talking about the pickleball and tennis courts right now, but this is a concern for the entire city. Our loss of?
Thank you.
Our loss of open space, green space. Our loss of open space, green space, farms. And I just ask that we hold that in consideration with everything the city's willing to hold it. And with regards to the pickleball, I have a couple of questions. One, how well the funding looks between the school and the city, maintenance going down the road, costs? And also, last question, because I don't want to take all night with this, but, um, where the old building sits behind the administration building, apparently the high school, middle school, going to form down. What's going to happen with that spot and can pickleball come to a stop? The football stadium is right on the shore.
Do you look into to their cost?
Well, uh...
I don't know.
No, I, well, obviously the school owns that property and they haven't given us any indication of what their long-term plans are going to be for that entire parcel, all the way from Manchester Road all the way back to the back of the, of the football stadium. So we don't know what's going to happen there or when it's going to happen. It's, I don't know that it's even, I don't know if there are specific plans right now. I know I've heard them talk about raising that building, but I haven't, I haven't heard any kind of timeline about when that would happen. And it's not part of the building project as far as the new high school and moving the middle, the non-elementary and all those kind of things. It's not part of that project. So I don't know how far down the road that's going to happen. But again, that's their property at this point in time. So if it were sitting there bare and empty right now and they were willing to donate it, then it certainly would be, it would be another option. You know, another thing is, well, I guess two other things. One is the security of the building itself. The city will own the pickleball and the tennis courts. The city will be responsible for maintenance. You know, we've talked to a variety of other venues who do similar things like this and have been able to successfully get some funding, some private funding to help with maintenance costs. I would expect down the road that there'd be some financial consideration from the schools relative to upkeep. But, you know, I'm not saying we necessarily have to count on that, but it'd be the city's responsibility. Relative to the land, and this is, this is part of the, this was, this natural resources inventory mapping study was part of our comprehensive plan that, that we embarked on back then in two thousand and two. And I, I agree with you, relative to the, to the trees, it's not something that we would do lightly. Fortunately for us, we picked up close to five acres of wooded land right next to the Tudor House. So we got more wooded land now than we did when they did, than they did the study back in two thousand and two, an extra five acres. So that helps a little bit, hopefully, in terms of the thoughts relative to the, to the trees and foliage.
Do we know what type of wood is on that property at the state park, where it used to be state park?
No. Big trees.
Yes, that's just what I was saying.
A lot of trees. And it's nice. And there's a trail that goes through there. So if you've been through there. I mean, there's a trail that goes through there. I mean, I walked it, well, I mean, when you go over there, and please do take a look and walk over there, it's, there's a lot of trees, there's no question. There's a lot of trees down already, quite frankly. Not that we're felled by anybody, we're felled by nature. And it's, it's, there's no path that goes through there. It'd be hard for us to walk through there. And fortunately, two miles down the road, we've got four hundred acres, and we own five of it right next to our Tudor House for people that want to get out in the woods.
Are part of the plans going to be to do trails in there too, in that five acres?
Right, yeah. There's already a, one trail that the state park had in place. And then it's part of phase three of the project out there is to create some more trails and some benches and that type of thing in that section.
Does anyone else have any comments?
Mark Walker, five nine four two, day of the road. I'd like to show my support for the pickleball. And one thing this gentleman talked about, you know, that the pickleball people are crazy social group. And these folks would volunteer to do all kind of work for this thing, to help maintain it, keep the area clean. And so I think that's something to look at. It gets old guys like me outside, not to mention the kids on the tennis court. So I'll just always kind of support.
So we're going to put you down for maintenance?
Yes. I can run along lower.
Any other comments?
Sharon Rec, seven eight one, day of the road. Ironically, Mrs. Goodwin and I sat around next to each other holding the same document this evening. Has its own tab on the city's website and everything. And I just want to draw attention to a couple of parts of that because people that are sitting out there don't have access to this right now. So it says, "A recent forest canopy study was completed using a computer analysis program called City Green." And so within the general land uses in character of Franklin Township, a goal should be to achieve an average forty percent canopy cover. This study was completed in two thousand and two. And while we may have added the five acres over near the Tudor House, any of us that live in Franklin know that we've had Dominion come through at least twice during that time. And I personally have lost a lot of trees to Dominion. They've done a lot there in the past few years. Although they are trying to keep those large areas and the large trees where they can. This also says significant woodland resources were mapped using Summit County GIS aerial photos. Natural forests as well as areas greater than an acre were mapped. Fences and very narrow strips of trees were not mapped. And urban forests with lawn and landscape landings were not mapped. Analysis of the larger tracts of woodland reveals that Franklin Township has only sixteen percent woodland resources. So that's far below what we want as our forty percent. It is the large tracts of woodlands like our three point two-two-five acres over at Sisler that provide most public health benefits as well as aesthetic ecological benefits. It also goes on, and I wish this had happened, and I don't think it has. It says Franklin Township should consider and develop programs and policies to protect, support, and expand its urban forests. Such tasks should include becoming a tree city USA as recognized by the National Arbor Day Foundation, creating a Franklin Township Tree Commission, which would be active in planting and tree maintenance projects and educating the public, creating a system and putting procedures in place for residents who wish to plant for their new public trees. And the one I put a star next to, adopting tree preservation measures for public road and other civic improvement projects, providing incentives for tree preservation on private property during development. So twenty years ago, we were forward thinking and saying, look, we need to try to say what we can. And I think that many of us here are here because we like the rural character of New Franklin. I know that that's a sports complex area. I also know that sometimes it's possible to think out of the box of having this juice area. So I think it's really important that we take a look at this document. And I was glad to see it on the city website, and I wasn't even aware it was there until I was just poking around. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Does anyone else have any comments?
Does the microphones work?
Yes.
I'm a little bit hard hearing, but I could, I could hear Paul when he was standing here the same as I can hear him there. I can hear him good, but I love you, Judy, but I can't hear you.
I would say I love you back, but it would be on the mic.
Okay.
That's your only comment. Do you want me to speak up?
Yeah, well, are the microphones working?
Yeah.
Are they on?
Well, I think our, our techy guy, yes. Robert, did you make this so it wouldn't pick me up? Thank you. I am. No other comments? Yes, sir.
Tom Summer, five eight five two, longer. I just want to say I'm indifferent on the pickleball courts are keeping it as, as it is. I believe we're, we're playing a rock and a hard place. If we don't develop it, we lose it. If we develop it, we keep it. I mean, we're, we really don't have a choice in this.
It's not a large choice, you're right.
It's, it's, there's no choice. So we don't develop it, we lose it, we may develop it anyways. So.
And why couldn't it just say a green space?
It could stay in green space. It really could. That's, that's one of the options.
Well, if we don't do it, then the school's going to take it back. The school's going to do it.
Right. The school's going to do it eventually. But I'm saying, she asked, could it stay in green space? It could. It probably will not, but that is one option. And we missed your son tonight.
Yeah, he's not feeling well.
I'm sorry. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Eric Dillon, sixty-seven eighty-nine, Hampshire. How long ago did the school deed this to the city? Because according to county records, the school saw...
Oh, just recently.
Yeah, within the last sixty days or so, they finally went through.
Okay. And regards, take it back to another question. My understanding, these pickleball and tennis courts need periodic maintenance on these surfaces. And it's not an inexpensive adventure. So what is the annual cost on this maintenance and what is it? How often does it go down?
Uh, I'll have to get that information for you.
So we haven't gone into that yet, find out what the cost is?
No, I don't have a specific number.
And I think you're thinking about, and correct me if I'm wrong, you were talking about striping some of them. The pickle and the tins can be both being used?
Yeah. I, I think the consensus is we're going to try to avoid that because it's, it can be so confusing. That's why we'd really rather just do it in stages if we had to do that, rather than put both the striping on. There's a good one. What I can tell you is that we've inquired generally about that. And there's warranties with those court services. So it's not anticipated that there's going to be any significant maintenance expenses over the first several years. Down the road, you know, whether there's going to be cracking, I don't, you know, I don't know the answer to that, but I'll find out.
And that's probably true with everything. If you think about even your home, you have to keep things up and you have to maintain it.
Yeah, these courts are a different type of surface that you need to run their maintenance. It's not, it's not like the road.
And I think that was one of the things mentioned in the emails that we received is some of the courts around have not been maintained, so they cannot use them.
I had two, I had two children that played tennis through Manchester. And actually, a lot of us were afraid that tennis was going to die when Mr. Sanders left. Luckily, it's not. It sounds like it's actually flourishing and doing very well. We would go to North Canton, I can't remember the name of that dome, and we would play there. And the surface got so bad there that we were worried about kids hurting their ankles because it was so bad. But we had to go every year and weed it. The kids, the team would go down there, drive all the way to North Canton, weed somebody else's property, so.
Yeah, well, that's what we've seen. Because we, well, we've gotten a lot of prices from a lot of different places. That, you know, that the technology has improved in terms of the composition of, you know, of the surfaces, et cetera, that they're designed to, to last longer. At least that's the way, that's what the brochures always suggest to us anyway. And that's probably true. I, I got a guess that whatever they're putting down now for services, it probably has a little greater life expectancy than what they put down maybe twenty or thirty years ago.
Any other comments?
My, my name is Larry Thomas. I live on Grove Road. I don't know nothing about pickleball. So I don't know if just two people playing the whole court or a group of people. Where, you're going to have one court, two courts, but you're inviting all these people from Northwest, Norton, everybody, anybody wants to play. Are we not going to be able to play ourselves? I don't play pickleball, but somebody from...
Who do you want you to play?
Somebody from New Franklin. Does ten people play at a time?
Four.
Four?
Generally four.
Four? So it's not going to take many people to eat up the school. Is it going to be one court?
Four, I believe.
Four.
One court?
Four courts.
Four courts.
Yeah.
The game's generally moved pretty quickly. And that's kind of the interesting part about pickleball. And that's why it's become so social. People put their paddles up.
Yeah.
And you might, I might play with him one game, the next game I might be playing with Mr. Daniels, next game I might be playing with you.
Or you could play with the same four people again.
You could.
And... Somebody's standing here trying to get on the pickleball.
It, it moves very quickly.
You don't have to have a policeman there.
Somebody want to explain that?
Let's see how good he is.
There's an honor system among these pickleball players that's been explained to me. Maybe this gentleman can help.
We have, we have racks against the fence that we, we use to control the order of pickleball play. If somebody comes in and we're using three courts and there's an open court, they can continue playing. Therefore, if it comes down to where all courts, the courts are full and we have extra people waiting, then the paddles go up and those people have the priority after our game is over. The games are only played to eleven. Some of them, some of them last five minutes, some of them fifteen minutes. But it's a, again, a very accommodating group that play this game. And there's no, never issues. It's always orderly. And sometimes I, I had my paddles up there and they get mixed up on where their paddle was. But as far as...
It's orderly with you, but is it orderly with...
I play, I play down at Butler, Butler Park, which is down in Green. And we've had as high as forty, forty players at one time. And that still goes in an orderly manner. And people are conversating and talking with each other, and everybody's down there having a great time. So it's not a high-pressure, high-tension time if you want to come and play pickleball.
The answer is we do not know whether you'll have to wait or not. That's the answer. No, no.
Yes, I'm sorry. Jerry Ball, sixty-three twenty-five, New Drive. Just to kind of piggyback off of what this gentleman said. You, Mayor, you said that the Manchester schools would, we'd give a schedule so that we would know ahead of time when the tennis courts were in use. That's correct? That, that's kind of the plan?
Yes, it's planned.
So would that also include, because you said Northwest and Coventry would also be able to play at those tennis courts, does that include a schedule for all three of those schools?
We'd make it available to them. That would be the intention. And they said tennis courts, so, you know, we think really that's, that's probably, I don't think we're going to see a lot of conflict with those time periods. Because most of those, they're playing right after school. And I think the public's use is going to be more, you know, evenings, weekends, during daylight hours. You know, there's another aspect to this thing, that when you talk about recreational, expanding recreational opportunities, and that's the revenue that comes into the city. The people, those forty people that come and sit around. And when they're done, they go up to the corner and they fill their gas tank. And they, and they, they go down to Subway or PLX Deli and pick up the sand. You know, and this isn't, I'm not just trying to put icing on the cake. This is, this is real in terms of this type of development. And so it's not just something that's nice for the community. It brings people into the community for activity. And it's, and ultimately, eventually, they, they support local businesses as well. So there's that economic benefit as well.
It is true, but you still may have to wait. We're not sure about that.
They might want to get a haircut while they're down there, right?
I only have sanity, see, because I'm retired. My husband keeps me busy the rest of the time. Thank goodness I have job security. Resolution twenty-two R dash zero one. A resolution approving the appointment of Daniel Bickett as chief of the City of New Franklin Police Department and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three reading rule.
Second?
Who did the second? I'm sorry.
David.
We have a first and a second.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Betterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution number twenty-two R zero one. I have a first and a second. Did you get the second?
Was it?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Betterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Congratulations, Dan, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm doing resolution number two, R zero two.
A resolution authorizing the City of New Franklin, New Franklin to enter into a one-year agreement with the Summit County Public Defenders Commission and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
I'd like to make a motion to raise the three reading rule on this resolution. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Betterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution number twenty-two R zero two.
Seven.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Betterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargett?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Are you doing the decision number two R zero two?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to accept an Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Ohio Nature Works Grant for the construction of tennis and pickleball courts at the New Franklin Zistler Field Complex, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
We're in a hurry, I guess. We have no second readings and no third readings, and no pending legislation. So I think David always says, this is our favorite round of the reading call. What can I say?
I was hoping you'd continue.
I know. You cannot stop that now.
We'll see as time goes on. Everybody else's favorite part, but, no, thank you, and I appreciate, off to a good start from council. It's appreciated. I just got a couple things. The Republic contract, we reported on this before, and we, we have been, the City of Green has agreed that we can piggyback on their contract. Republic has indicated they're not sure that they can honor those prices from Green, and we are continuing those discussions, and as we do, we did obtain a ninety-day extension on our current contract. So our current contract with Republic will run through the end of March at the, at the rates that have been in place. For right now, that's, for unlimited, that's fourteen dollars, sixty-one cents a month. So that stays in place till, till March. We are, I expect by the next council meeting, we're continuing our discussions, and by the next council meeting, I expect either to have an agreement to present to you for your consideration, an extension with Republic, or in the alternative, we're not able to reach some type of agreement that we think makes sense, and then I'll be coming to you with a request to rock for bid on the contract. The, we're going to need to conform as closely as possible to the Green contract, but we've gotten a legal opinion that, that there could be variation, there's always like some variation in terms of parts and days and those kind of things. So as long as we're in the same general parameters, it wouldn't have to be the same rate. So we're having that discussion with Republic, and I'll report back to you in the interim, and I expect to have some avenue to present to you at the next meeting, either a proposal to approve an extension or a, a resolution to rock for bid. We're hoping we can work something out, because on the one hand, we certainly would like to have, you know, the contract with Green, and I'm using just the one criteria, the unlimited, as, as a barometer of, of pricing. You know, we're right now at fourteen dollars and sixty-one cents. Green's contract began at sixteen dollars and forty-four cents, and Republic has come to us and, and suggested something in the seventeen-dollar-plus range, and we're, we're considering it, we're having discussions. The one thing we're pretty, we're reasonably sure of is if we go out to bid, we think these bids are gonna come back in at eighteen dollars a dollar, and we're following what some of the other bids are coming in in some of the other cities, and, you know, it could be twenty dollars. So we don't want to cut off our noses by our face, and that's, we're trying to find that balance, and eventually, we'll be looking at you guys and men and women to see how you want to weigh in on that, but that's really the tricky part of this. We can walk away from it and go say, let's go bid, and, and those bids may come in eighteen, nineteen, twenty dollars. So that's, that's the, I guess, that's, that's the substance of, of the discussions, and that's, that's why we would consider having any discussions, quite frankly. So we'll keep you posted, and I expect to have them report to you by next council meeting. We're dealing with the COVID surge here. We've had a number of employees out in all of our departments. I want to commend the, the police particularly, guys have been working a lot of double shifts and a lot of taking, working on their days off. We had a number of those fellows that, that are out, two people in our administration office that are out. You, you read the same papers I do, and it's, it's of concern. I can tell you we're doing everything we can here, requiring masks for group settings and maintaining social distancing and doing everything we can to keep our people healthy so that they're here, and first of all, healthy, and then second of all, available and continue to provide the, the high level of service that they provide. Comprehensive plan update, we're proceeding on that, and we did send out the request for proposals. We had three proponents submit proposals. The, I announced the last meeting, we have a screening committee that has already met once, and they're gonna meet again next week. They met once to review the proposals and decided to proceed with interviews of all three of the candidates, for lack of a better term. That steering committee consists of Mike Conwell from the Citizens Advisory Panel, Mr. Cox from council, Jennifer Six, our Economic Development Person, Barry Gano, our zoning person, and myself. So we'll have those interviews next week, and I expect then, at the next meeting, we'll have a resolution to accept one of those proposals, to get one of these folks on board. The process itself, all of them have indicated a process, a twelve-month process, and, and probably couldn't go far wrong with any of them, quite frankly, but all of them tuned in to what we requested in the proposal, a lot of public meetings, surveys, a lot of opportunities for public input, and that's what we want. And so this will be a really nice tool, and I think we're, we're setting it up to do it the right way. We will have a, another specialty express resolution for you, I'm gonna tell you in advance, the next meeting, and this is to participate in the Summit County pavement process, bidding process. So they want that answer by the end of January, and all it says is we can participate. We will not be submitting a list of this particular roads. We will indicate that, that, that list will be provided. We're working on that, but we won't have that part of the resolution, so I'll have that resolution for you at the next meeting, and we'll be asking you to approve that at the next meeting, just to permit us to take part in the, in the Summit County bidding program. And finally, we have not forgotten about Bolus Park. The, we are, some of the memorials, we're, we're working with them in terms of what, what we want to place there, and they've got a couple different options they're gonna present to us, and we'll select something nice, and we'll look to have a ceremony in the spring to formally dedicate Bolus Park. And I didn't have that up my list, but lastly, we are still in touch with the marksman here today with the solar guy. He's asked us for some information about what we're currently spending. We've given him that information, kind of balls in their court. We're waiting to hear back from them, so we're working on that as well. That's all I got.
Susan?
Just to kind of, a few things. As you know, we are at our time of the year where we're trying to close out previous year and open the new year, so we are very busy, and we have two people down from the four, four-man team, so we're, we're struggling. So some of us are working from home, some of us are just in and out, so please bear with us. We're doing the best that we can with the short man, the shorter amount of manpower we have, so I just wanted to kind of make you aware of that. This is a really busy time for us with all the deadlines that are coming up, so we're doing the best that we can. As far as reporting is concerned, I know those of you who've sat on the council forenoon office, and you know the regular procedures, but I wanted to let the new people know that, you know, you do get, we generally, the monthly reports and yearly reports are what's emailed to you through your email address here, or you can print out what you want, or whatever. You can look at it, and you can do what, with, with it, what you want. You also get your monthly reports and your monthly bank reps, and they're sent that way as well. The spreadsheets that I was talking about earlier, that you will be getting those possibly by the end of this month, which will have, as the rest of you are aware of, at least five years back on expenses, specifically line by line, and revenue line by line, so you'll have all that information. If you have any questions, and this goes for everybody, please come and see me about it. I know that, and the mayor can attest to this, working with appropriations and cash can be very confusing, and sometimes I have to update even department heads when we're talking about, no, none of you are talking about two different things, so being able to read the reports is kind of, can be kind of tricky. So if you need help, please come, sit down, I'm happy to go through the reports with you, explain whatever you need. If you have questions, I know a lot of the members that have been on for a while have stopped in, trying to ask me things if they, if they didn't understand anything or wanted to get some further information, so please do so. The more you know, the better I, the better my job goes. It's easier for me, so we always want to keep it that way. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Susan. Do we have any old business?
A couple things here I just wanted to ask about. This is back in the fall, I had a resident contact, he was at fifty ninety-nine Palm Drive. This was a pavement issue that resulted from some repaving on, in that area. I think he did talk with the Service Department, but nothing's been done out there yet. He reached back out to me, he's getting a lot of water collecting there, freezing, so he, he's concerned that it's supposed to pour onto the road, and plus now it's, it's like a new collection right here.
Yeah, we've, we've looked at that. I, I can't, I smile because I think that's a property where the, the water runs from the state park onto this person's property, and it's created some water problems historically. That's the same property.
I don't think so. This is the cul-de-sac right there. It's kind of, it's a ground return, and everything's kind of catching where the pavement now is at a different elevation from the concrete curb.
Can you speak for me, you know, if, yeah?
Yeah, it's gonna get fixed in the spring. They didn't make it back here to do that.
Okay.
There's multiple areas, I told them that, that we're not paying the bill until it's fixed. Part of it, there's still a chunk that's not done yet, and we, we, the weather got too cold, so.
If one of the reports you had mentioned about the comprehensive plan and the whole selection process and stuff, will that be video that we can watch that as well, just to see what each?
I don't know.
You, you had mentioned we could possibly.
There may be trade secret issues involved there, that they, they may not prefer to have it. Video, I don't know.
Is that in the Zoom-type Teams meeting, or is that?
No, in person.
There's it.
Any other old business or any new business? Any public questions?
Ball, six three two five Levee Drive. I got that address moved for the cemetery here, but they will not move, or they'll not change the name of the Cherry Avenue.
You're kidding.
No, I'm still working on that, and they, they're not clear as to why they think it is not. The other map sources believe that it is, Caterley Way, but we will not have it, so.
Do you suppose a letter from the city would?
I don't know. I'm still working on it. If I think that's the case, I'll kick it back in your lap.
Okay.
So, Mr. Google Map Guy, a couple things.
Other addresses?
I'm sorry.
Other addresses to change?
No, not necessarily. We have St. Luke's, and we, when going to St. Luke's, you go down Latham Lane to get back there, but at one time, you could go down that other street there.
Oh, it's closed off.
I don't know, I can't think it. Withers.
Withers.
Withers. You could go down Withers and get to St. Luke's, but that's blocked off now, so you can't get in there unless there's emergency vehicles. But apparently, Google Maps or some service, they turn on Withers, and even though we have signups saying, don't go this way, we still have semi trucks coming down there and then have to back out. I don't know if there's anything that could be changed, as far as providing directions. And then, even though it's, it's not Google, but it's owned by Google, like every place, so we were, we were coming home this weekend from a little trip, and just put in New Franklin for, for the thing, and for New Franklin, just put it in New Franklin, it directed me to approximately two twenty-six West Nimasilla. And I was just thinking that maybe Nimasilla, Manchester, or City Hall would be a better.
We, at one time, in one of the meetings where we were some discussion about moving the actual center of town to here, has that been landed on? Have we, has any decision been made on that? Oh, no. No, that was, I mean, that was among many ideas that were, you know, that were discussed, just maybe this, maybe that. There's never any formal intention. You're thinking here or at?
Well, I just thought it was odd that it would take you to that location, you know, between, just off Dayton, August, Nimasilla, as opposed to whether it be at pretty much anywhere else in the city. So, you know, so.
I'll look at.
There you go. I appreciate that.
Do we know where the geographic center of the city is? With that for the annexation in the corner?
Yeah, it's been determined. I'll have to get that for you. I can't recall where it is.
A silly curiosity.
Yeah. Probably not far from where we're sitting, but frankly, it's probably pretty close to where we're sitting.
That park is in the middle of D and D or where they are.
Yeah.
No, we figure all the way out to that.
Yeah, maybe a little bit.
Any other public comments? Paul, do we have an executive session?
We do not.
And I would ask them, Julie. Next council meeting is January nineteenth at sixteen AM. Paul, pose. So we have one pose. Thank you, guys, for kind of putting me in my ease tonight. I appreciated it. I'll find you better every month, but I want you all to fix it for me and tell me what you think.